Thank you. Welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for December 4th, 2019. First item is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Town Administrator Weekly Update. The floor is yours, Jen.
Thank you. I had a call today, so I guess I'm back up a little bit. So we know at this point that we've rescheduled the auditor. She did tell me that she would have a date for us by next Wednesday, the 11th, so we could start advertising it. It's gonna be after the holidays, and she's requested that it be at 6:00, based on the length of the questions and the extensiveness of it. She feels like it's gonna go for some time, and she wants to make sure she can give each question, you know, it's due justice. So I'll get a date for you, and we've asked Ron to join her, the owner of RHR Smith. I have had someone ask me if the questions are public, which obviously anything in our office is public, or a majority of it, and wants to know if they can be posted on the town's website. So that's your choice.
I think, right now, until she's able to go through them, figure it all out, myself, I don't, I think some of those questions probably weren't even valid for her to be looking at. She's gotta make that determination, obviously.
They wanna see what was submitted from the public.
Yeah, I...
I mean, I can't, if someone comes in and asks for a copy of it, you know I have to give it to them.
Right, you have to give it, so what's the difference?
It'll be coming out when we do it. They'll be read aloud, and, you know, they'll all be done.
So I won't put it on the town website, but if they wanna come in and get it, I can, I have to give it out.
Yeah, that's not, yes.
What's that?
But if they come into my office and ask for the list of the questions, then, okay. So we won't put 'em online, okay? Confirming, David, that we're doing interviews next Monday?
Yeah, I had to reschedule because of weather. We weren't sure, you know, the weather forecast was kind of a, we were supposed to get all kinds of snow, then it stopped for a while, which was great and all that, but I did not wanna see these people coming in, and me having to leave, 'cause I'm...
And we're down to two, as one of them withdrew, so we're down to two.
Really? Okay.
So hopefully we can get them Monday.
Yeah, Monday, I mean...
Unless you wanna sneak them in tomorrow night or something. Nope, not tomorrow.
That's my birthday, so...
I know, I know.
My wife would kill me.
I know. I just, can you tell I'm anxious to...
I was on the phone with Jen on her birthday, so it probably wouldn't be a good idea.
I'm anxious to get rid of the phone, so let's hope for no snow next Monday, so we can do these interviews. Ambulance billing, I know that we've had the holiday and we have the snow, so I'm gonna assume that we really haven't had a chance to look at that. We put that off until next week. We really need to pick a collections company and move forward with it, so that...
We only had, what, two?
We had two, and I think I had a...
Well, it was greatly better than the other, wasn't it?
Right, I talked to Rick about it today, and it really, I think, I mean, we feel like it's gonna come down to, especially if, if the billing company uses both of them with majority of other towns, so he didn't have a preference of one or the other. One will go a little further back with a lesser fee, the other one will go farther back, but it's a higher fee. It was the Thomas Agency and First Financial Resources, which was 33% compared to the One of them, and, he actually does make a recommendation, I guess, I'm sorry, one of them seems to get a better, better, higher response from patients. But just take a peek at that, and we'll, maybe we can make a decision for next week. And I will get Michelle and Rick's opinion by then. So we have the town report. Who wants to know what we're missing? So the dedication, which I'm trying to work on, and I'm trying to reach out to somebody, but I think that, that you guys, at least two of you, could give me, help me with some information on that, so maybe when you, if you have some bullet points on who we've decided, then you can just kinda call me and tell me what the bullets are, and I'll do, I'm trying to dig, based on the individual, on history and so forth, so I've got, you know, but I wanna try to make it more personable, and, but without anybody knowing at the same time, so I don't have a lot of people to reach out for with this individual, or individuals, so whatever you have, I would appreciate. David, some time ago, when we were talking about HEB, and we were, we talked about maybe having a conference call with them, so he sent me an email, says, "Jen, following up on this again, from watching the meetings online, it appears several aspects of the report we provided were not clear and were misunderstood. I think we'd both benefit from sitting down and reviewing the town's concerns and to find the best path forward, short term and long term. I also understand that there is perception that such a sit-down would cost the town money, but that is not the case. We stand by our work and our reasonable efforts to clarify our work and ensure the town is happy with what we're included." So he'd really like to have that. I don't know if the board still feels like, you know, we can start with just a basic, you know, conference call with you and I and him, and then bring it back, or if, you know, you guys wanna meet with him in full, or if you're just all set altogether. I gotta tell him something.
A conference call would be just fine.
Yeah, why not? If it's not gonna cost anything, why not talk to him?
Yeah.
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 Yeah, I just, I just didn't, I didn't feel that the taxpayers at Acton want to, would be willing to wanna pay for something that's, myself, kinda absurd.
If it's not gonna charge, then...
Yeah, maybe there's something else in there that...
We missed.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. If, yeah, the conference calls... Or maybe just the conversation, they may say, "Yeah, maybe we need to go a different route," so...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, if you tell them, "You know, we can't afford doing this and that, what is the alternative?" 'Cause I think they gave us the Taj Mahal, well, we can, we can't even rent the hall.
So, has Monday, the 9th, at 4:30? Our first interview is at 5:00?
Yeah, works.
Is the weather good? We'll just do it, and certainly if either one of you wanna join, just let me know, so I can post accordingly.
What time again?
4:30, so just a half hour. I just have to post it if more than one of you are in the building, so make sure you let me know, please. All right, take care of that. Maps Online, I can't remember if I told you, so if I did, I apologize, if I didn't, I apologize. So we decided to start sending O'Donnell's and Associates to kinda better assist downstairs in the Maps Online. We decided to ask O'Donnell's to start sending our information to Cardiographics twice a year instead of once a year. You know, the idea is, anything on the O'Donnell's website is still information as of April 1st, so it doesn't change at all. However the property sat as of April 1st is what you see is what you get, no changes. Cardiographics is designed to, every time there are mapping updates, or address changes, or anything like that, it gets updated. When it made, when the change is made in Trio, there's a program that runs on my computer every night, midnight-long story, that updates it. But code enforcement was still having some issues with the splits and transfers only being done once a month, and when people would come in to do things, it wasn't, the lines weren't as accurate as they could be. So we sat down with O'Donnell's and kinda renegotiated. It didn't cost you any money, so, and they've decided, they agreed to start sending the work to Cardiographics twice a year. So that first six-month period has been done. I just wanted to let you know that the Maps Online was just updated with the first six months, from June to December, so we're hoping that that's gonna start working a little bit better. So, updates are done. Transfer station stickers, just wanna let you know that Bob called today and asked us to order some for him for next year. He did tell me I couldn't pick purple again, so we're working with the company. He's leaving it up to me. We're really working with the company to find a color.
Can't do purple every year, you know?
Well, I know, but apparently I can do purple on white. Last year was white on, it was purple on black. I'm just kidding. I think we were going with blue. We went through a list of colors, so... A gentleman from the Census Bureau came in today, and a couple of things, he said, I had a very short meeting with him, 'cause I didn't have the time, was that they've actually increased the rate of pay for anybody that's interested in census work. They've increased it to 17.50 an hour, which was up from, I think, 16 on their original postings. They are desperately seeking people to do census work in the Action Chapel York County area. Basically, you're going and knocking on doors and determining how many people are in the household, and, you know, gathering the information, doing data entry and sending it back. So he would like to come and do a presentation. We agreed on 15 minutes next week at the Selectman's Meeting. It'll be very short, and he just wants to tell you a little bit about it, so he'll be here next week.
Put him on first, and...
Yep. So remember when we had the staff meeting, talked about a Christmas party and trying to figure out, yeah, when you're trying to get that many peoples together, we're having difficulty coming up with dates, because of, you know, Jonathan Works Night, everybody's schedule is different. We have come up with a date that best works for the staff, which is Thursday, December 19th, at 1:00. So hopefully you can sneak out of work and join us.
What time, 1:00?
Evenings, I mean...
1:00?
1:00. I'm gonna just do a luncheon. That worked for, for pretty much everybody, between meetings and commitments, and December's a busy month.
Where are we meeting?
I will send you those details. Gym occupancy, another thing that I can't, I didn't see that I had put it on there, but we did have the fire chief check the occupancy of the gym, similar to the building here and the downstairs, and he labeled that at 34. 34 people. And then the only other thing I had was a reminder that Maine Municipal is going to be here on December 12th. We're gonna be walking through the fire station, going over the concerns that he had last time, a couple of things from the transfer station, and really this building and the fitness center, so anybody wants to tag along, you're more than welcome.
What time are they calling?
So...
Whatever, just...
I feel like...
Rick, Rick's the one who checked the gym out?
He checked it out for occupancy.
Occupancy, so he's saying 34 people in total can be in that building?
At once, yes.
Once, okay.
Just like he gave, what, 80 upstairs and 20 downstairs? There must be some firefighter thing you...
There's a, NFPA has a, has a square footage times what you have for seating times, yeah, and it varies, whether it's movable chairs, fixed seating, and all that, so...
Ken, I feel like the 12th is gonna be around noon time. I'll send you an email just to confirm. That's a Thursday. Unfortunately, I made a lot of these appointments before I knew that my assistant was leaving, so I'm trying to juggle the best I can, but I know that it was before the office opened, so...
Okay.
Okay.
You heard anything on the furnace for the fire station?
No.
I've seen him over there working on it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but that was last week, so I'm sure if he was working, it must be done by now.
He hasn't, I still have the other half of the check.
You can't really at that point.
Yeah, that'd be a case of, once you're stat, you're gonna...
You have to finish it.
I have the check still, second half.
Okay.
It's okay. I'll follow up, I'll double-check. And the other thing that I was gonna ask you, so obviously we are advertising for a part-time assistant, and we're advertising for cleaning. We have gotten a lot of interest in the cleaning job. I mean, we put next week, but I have an individual in mind that has a little bit of municipal experience, that has strong accounting skills. She's not looking for the job, she doesn't wanna apply for it, she's not interested in the job, but she is willing to come in and help out for a couple of weeks, like on Tuesdays and Fridays, just to kinda help keep me above water with everything, so it would be temporary, should go in the books, just like everybody else, town employee. She does not live in Acton, probably, none of you probably don't know her. She'll be bonded, background checked, just for a few weeks until we can get the position filled. Okay with that?
Yep. Yep, you said you haven't had applicants yet, or?
I think I've had one.
What are the applicants?
We originally put December 13th, just to kinda put it out there for two weeks and see what that brings.
We, I, we might be better off to extend that out a little, especially with the holidays and everything.
Well, and, and that was one of the things that Michelle said right off the bat when we, when we kinda discussed it. She said, you know, "We're never gonna find anybody in December," and we know that, well, we don't know that, you never know.
Well, I mean, the problem, we just, we just had, between Thanksgiving holidays, we got the Christmas holiday coming and everything else, after the new year, things start clearing out a little bit, we may get more interest.
And we may, and, and if we only get one or two, and it's, you know, we, I mean, we're not gonna hire somebody, you know, that, that doesn't fit the needs of the Town of Acton. You know, it's, you know, we've, so if we don't have a qualified applicant, as far as Michelle and I and the board is concerned, we'll, we'll certainly go back out and re-advertise it. You know, maybe it was selfish on our part when we put, yeah, we, no, she gave her notice, let's say Thanksgiving Friday was her last day, so it was the Monday before, so it'll actually be a three-and-a-half weeks run. And we've got it, you know, in a lot of different places, in Maine Municipal. You know, the, the problem, we're gonna have a hard time bringing somebody in from another town because of the amount of hours, you know, Acton's not open 40 hours a week. We were able between two positions to give her 35, 36.
The biggest problem you have, too, is if you cut back the hours like we've done...
Right.
The, the benefits, and that's what drags everybody into benefits.
Right, and we changed the personnel policy to be 35, 35 hours for health insurance, because remember, we had the two assistants. At budget time, we asked for a request in the hours on the assistant downstairs and the other assistant upstairs, and we increased that, we changed the policy for health insurance to be 35 hours now. So this person coming in won't be eligible. You know, hourly rate-wise, we're comparable to surrounding towns. Chapley has the same, the same deputy that took my position when I left there in 2006, the same employee has been in there, and she's, so you figure 2006, that's 13 years, she's at $19, $20 an hour. Our last assistant was, you know, four years in, and she was at 17.50. So hourly-wise, we're okay. The benefits do take a while to become comparable, I mean, they are comparable for long-term employees, but that was a problem we were seeing in the beginning. There's, you know, and it's, it's, it's a trainable position, you just need somebody with strong office skills and somebody with, you know, really strong communication skills, so we'll find somebody. We're on a four-year cycle in Acton, we are very proud and well-represented in York County. And it's funny, 'cause every time we go to the, like the...
I go, it's called the University of Clerk Work, or whatever.
Acton Municipal Building and Training Center, yeah.
When we had our, our last, our last class at the Oak Street Bistro, when Secretary of State's office comes down, it's all for York County clerks and, and their deputies, and Sarah and I always went, and, but you, they go around the room, and, you know, they want everybody, history on he, on each of you, because we don't know everybody there, and it's funny to watch, you know, April and Shelley and Lauren, you know, all say, you know, mention Acton, so... And I, I've had a couple of people say something, I've had a couple of people say something, I just wanna, wanna put it out there, that the, we did, we did have a conversation with the assistant as far as pay, and what the surrounding town was looking to offer her, and what we could do, but sometimes it's, you know, the title piece of it is, you know, that's a huge step up, so it wasn't that we couldn't match what another town was offering her. Protection One is calling me, that's our alarm company.
That would be why I get an 800 call a second ago, so, yeah, it might be the same thing.
Let them worry.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, sometimes you can't come up with enough benefits for someone if they wanna be the, the top banana, you know, so, and you can't blame them. Every, I, I think I've been here for at least, I've been here for three people that have left, and all of them say that the training was great.
I have to go downstairs.
Yeah?
I have to go downstairs.
Okay.
Anyway, we've got all the app form approved, and I'll be back.
Sure. Yeah, so I mean, all of them said that the training they've gotten here has made it possible for them to go somewhere else, so, you know, Jen's a great instructor, and trains them well, and probably too well, so, but what are you gonna do, you know, so... Okay, warrants and the bills are all signed?
Yeah.
I believe, yeah, we've all been in at different times and done that. Approve of the agenda, go here, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for December 4th.
And I'll second that.
Move to second to approve the agenda, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 27th.
I'll second that.
Move to second to approve the minutes of December 22nd. Further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. I'm gonna hold up at this point, and hold Jen some back, and then we can move on to the Department Heads. We had a snowstorm this week, so that's, went well, from what I've seen around town, so...
Did you get one, too? 'Cause I had those both on there, is, did you get a call?
I, I think I probably got it early, I got an 800 number as you were, given your, your update. I didn't take it, because I thought somebody might be trying to sell me a cow warranty, so...
I have their number in there, I told them that...
Any warranty didn't run out or something?
Yeah, so that must've been what it was.
Yeah, 'cause I have you first on the list, since you're closer. We're both at home.
I should've taken it, so...
No, no, that's okay.
Well, I won't take a call, I'm sitting here, so...
I'm set, Protection One.
So, yeah, mine doesn't, mine just gives me an 800 number.
Sure.
No, no, my son-in-law's business, Bert.
Oh, gosh, remember that.
Anyway, okay.
All right, so I think that's all I have.
Okay. We approved the warrants, we did the agenda, and minutes are all set for November 22nd?
Yep, I don't have printed agendas for the audience, if you want me to go get them, I think there's nothing really on there.
Audience okay without the agenda?
It's, there's one item under new gen...
I don't at the end why you really, it's, it's gonna be really a quick meeting.
One item under new business.
Yeah, okay. Department Heads, complete chair updates, do we have any? Going once, going twice? Okay, we're gonna move on. Old Business, Article 43, the Ridge.
Okay, so we left off last week with the Road Committee giving a recommendation of 0 to 5 to 1, I believe, for the Ridge, and they did not feel like they could, there was no completed watershed survey. Leslie was in today, double-checking on if there's anything on the agenda for, for them, and we had a conversation about it.
This is the one on Bulge?
Yes, and I called the contact person and asked him if he could provide a copy of the completed watershed survey to the Board of Selectmen, because that's what the Road Committee was pointing out, that, you know, they didn't have. He said no, he said that he had gotten it via word of mouth from the Department, you know, DEP, somebody he had spoken to. I offered him time to see if he wanted to come up and find one. He doesn't know where or how he was gonna get that, and I said, you know, unfortunately, based on that information, the Board is probably going to rescind their vote, because you don't qualify based on that. And he said, okay.
Yeah, I...
So I don't, you know, I mean, the, I don't know what else he will do, but that's...
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's...
So it's 3C, I think, is, according to the Road Committee, who did due diligence, was that that should be a no.
Pond identified as risk under threat.
I think the pond is identified, I think it was the second half of that, wasn't it?
The pond, I don't think is identified.
Because, listen, the question is, is the Great Pond identified as a risk or under threat by a completed watershed survey approved by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection? They answered yes, but in fact...
It was no.
We can't find one.
There is no watershed survey.
There is not one, they cannot supply us with that.
And the Chair indicated that she reached out to Linda Shire as well, you heard her update last week.
It says, "If yes, at which level?" High, medium, or low, and they've got medium written down, which is, doesn't make any difference, 'cause they can't answer yes.
And that's gonna be one of the changes to the form, if, if they say yes, attach a copy of the watershed survey.
Yeah.
Yep, but there, there isn't one, because they called and tried finding one, and Linda Shire said there wasn't one.
I'm just saying, going forward, that's one of the changes they're gonna make.
Moving forward, then we have it there, don't we?
So there's no question.
Yeah, okay, so...
And just make a motion that we uphold our decision?
I know, you approved it.
We voted yes on this, 'cause we did it, we did it not sending it to the Road Committee.
Right, this was the one, right.
Yeah, we did it backwards, so, so we just need to rescind our yes vote, so...
Make a motion that we rescind our decision on Bulge, is it?
On the Ridge.
On the Ridge.
Yeah, that's the date we did it.
On 10/23/19.
And I'll second that.
Move to second to rescind our, rescind our yes vote that we made on 10/23 for the Ridge application under title, under Article 43. So may further discussion? Move this again. Okay, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, so...
Just put the date on?
Yeah, cross the net out, wanna do that, wanna do that, and we'll initial it.
So are you actually rejecting it, you sending it back? What's the final vote on that?
Rejecting it, because, because they're not, they can't even put back in unless they can prove they're in part of that survey anyways, so...
Right.
Yeah.
If they can find.
I mean, they said yes, but they can't prove it, so, and it doesn't appear to be anything from...
I think our head has done her hallmark on it, and they can't come up with anything, so...
Yeah, okay. All set on that?
Yes.
Okay. Policies.
Done tonight. Brad, so he made some changes to the Freedom of Information, based on a couple of statute changes, minor, but I haven't had a chance to incorporate them into the document, and the demolition policy, we're still working with codes and transfer station, and then the other one was the drug testing. Well, I didn't give you guys the drug testing one, because I figured that one Brad was better off looking at. Now that we're not with LexisNexis anymore, that big, long, he's, I happened to see one in Chapley, that is quite smaller and meets all DOT regulations, and it's a lot easier to read and understand, so he's rewriting one for you.
Good, thank you. Goat Hill bids.
So I talked to Carl Davis, and he did receive, get both of the bids, he asked for another week, so we'll put this on the agenda for next week. Like you, he was trying to mathematically figure out the scope, because you had one that was a flat fee of 190...
190,000, and the other one...
So he wanted to speak to Doug Beck, who was the gentleman at the state that's kinda overseeing it, so, next week.
Okay. Ambulance billing.
Which we kinda talked about, we'll deal with the next couple of weeks, next week.
Yep. New business, gym meeting.
Okay, so we've, we have had a couple more sign-ups, and we've run some more, run a couple of numbers, we might be a little better shape. It's, so the treasurer, the treasurer doesn't wanna commit to a month and a date, because we don't know what the propane, what the oil bills are gonna do, and they deliver, we're on automatic delivery, so depending on how much they use, you know, they could be topping it off, but it does look like we're gonna be able to go a little further, depending on the weather, please. If the weather continues, we may be all right into January, even February, based on what we have to return. But nevertheless, you know, you've seen these, the Save the Gym posts, save them, so they would like to, they'd like to come before you, and I think that it's a good idea, as I mentioned last week, it's, hopefully we'll have a couple of oil bills under our belt, and...
Yep, I've gotten a couple more emails.
Be able to explain to them what the process is, because I did, I think I sent you guys an email, I met with Peter Baxter for an hour and a half on Monday or Tuesday morning, and, you know, we pulled up clips, he, and nothing on him, but he didn't understand the process of what had happened, you know what I mean, on how, on how it came from the Warren Finance recommendation to town floor. A lot of them really believed that all you have to do is, is just vote to...
Yeah, it's not throwing money at it, there's a lot more to it.
Right, right. So, and they have some, um, they have some other ideas as far as, um, you know, maybe grants and things to keep it, keep it going. And, but I hate to see them get too involved in that until the board makes a decision on, you know, are we going to have somebody to do all of this, uh, insurance piece of it?
Right.
You know, we need the manpower for that. Do we know the building is safe and we're going to keep going with that? So I kind of need you to gather that information before.
I mean, we've got to meet with Ken. Um, it's quite a bit, really, that from the, what the insurance guy is saying, we have to do to it. I mean-
Well, and I thought it would be good. That's why I want to meet with him and bring that back up on the twelfth when I see him. See, and because some of it, you know, like as we mentioned before, some of it is recommendations. I mean, we don't have to do every single thing that the insurance company tells us. The recommendations, they're trying to keep the rates down, that, you know, they don't want anybody to get hurt. But there were some that they're being a little more forceful on. So I'm hoping, I told you, we had a new, um, adjuster to review that list with them and kind of see where there's flexibility. But I'm not sure how you guys feel about the building, long-term. So.
My, the only issue I've got with it is, right now, I mean, I see all the posts on Facebook and I understand, I got a good friend that loves that place. But fiscally, we're, we're not, it's not sustaining itself. And then you start looking at the, uh, the insurance impacts, what they're, they, you know, what they'd really like to have down there as a requirement, you know, people checking stuff out. We can't afford having somebody go do that. We do have people right now volunteering their time to do that. But, I mean, right now, as of two weeks, how many people have signed up?
Two.
Okay, two. All that stuff I saw on Facebook, and we only got two people to sign up, I don't see a very good future in keeping that open with that kind of, I mean, I was expecting maybe thirty, forty people rent rolling in and saying, we're going to save this place. And it doesn't look good. But Ken, Ken has some issues with the building. I, I know of that. And so, I mean, we've got a lot of stuff we've got to put together here, but as of right now-
So what can, I mean, what can I help gather? Can we ask, I mean, code enforcement, what structurally? Because before we, before we say to them, you know, let's, let's do all these things and save the gym, because some of them want to, you know, they're willing to take on some of those things. Some of them feel like they have, um, backgrounds in gym equipment, fitness, and that they would do the new membership orientation like main municipal's asking. You know, there are people that are offering to do those things. I just hate to get to that point if the building's not safe. I don't know that.
That's the first thing to start with, would be, would be the building.
So who am I asking to make that decision? I'm looking for code enforcement to make a recommendation? Do we want to involve an engineer? Do we want to see if Mr. Gore, Mr. Lotz will recommend?
I think, I think we ought to start right now with just having Ken go down, take a look at it. If he starts finding things that pop out, then that's when you go to the next step. But, I mean, the financial part of it's what I'm worried about right now. Um, because we have to go into a budget, we have to make a budget up for that, for next year. And do we want to turn around and try to drag this out long enough to the point where, um, we're going to have to put more money into that? And then nobody signs up.
Right.
And, and, I, I don't know. I just, we'll see.
All right. So Ken, and how about the fire chief? Do you want his recommendation?
Well, yeah. I mean, right, right now, he's talking, there's only thirty-four people allowed into that building as, as of right now, right? At one time?
That's out of time. And you don't have that many people ever.
You're not going to have that many in there.
Yeah, like if you have three or four.
I know that.
But he was the one that had mentioned the air quality, right? Was it the?
Yeah, it's, what, somebody did. So that was, you know.
All right. So I'll start with those two. I'll get the list, the exact list from main municipal. Try to get tight numbers. Can we start so that they can advertise it December eighteenth? Um, I did tell him that, you know, I thought it'd be more apt to have it on like, because there was a couple of emails about Saturday meetings. Um, but maybe, you know, I said if, if we put it towards the end of the agenda, I mean, it's six-thirty now, and they could advertise it for six-thirty on the eighteenth.
What, what right now is the project, projected date? If say, they have nothing right now?
Well, well, I mean, I, we do, but that, I mean, that's, that's the problem. If I say a date out loud, do you know what I mean? And we have a cold snap, then it's going to be, oh, the town administrator said we were open until March fifteenth. If we don't have any colds, snaps, and it stays in the forties, like I think it's coming up next week, there's some days in the forties, you might be able to go a little longer. You know what I mean? I, and Michelle can't-
You're talking, you know, really the way we should be looking at is-
We're going month to month.
Worst-case scenario right now, are we going to get through January?
We may.
Worst-case scenario.
Yes, we may. And, and, and the other piece that's kind of changed since then, and I not, don't mean to sound decisive. So remember, we talked about people that have prepaid through June thirtieth. This is where the other piece comes in. So if I have fifteen hundred dollars left in that account after the bills have been paid, I have to take everybody that's prepaid through June thirtieth. Everybody paid at different levels. So the firefighters, they'd only pay ten dollars a month. So, you know, that's, um, six months. I got to refund them sixty dollars. The town employees were at a twenty-dollar rate. So that's a hundred and twenty. And then I've got the thirty dollars. That's a hundred and eighty dollars. I've had a couple of calls and that's what's changed, um, for those people saying, don't worry about refunding me. So that money goes back in. So if you want to-
You still have to worry about it.
Well, if not, they give me something in writing and tell me it's a donation. I know. And that's the piece that-
I'd say for, for-
And that's where it's gray. So I'm-
Figuring it, I would figure the refund.
I would figure the refund also. Yeah.
And then you will get the other aspect of it, that every month that goes on, it's less money to refund.
Right, right. That's why we have to calculate it. Right. We calculated every time-
Right.
On a, a heat bill comes in. But, I mean, they're filling that every other, you know, it seems like they're here every two weeks now.
It's a big bonus and it's, yeah, it's a-
You know, to fill it.
Forty-by-sixty building or whatever.
And we do have a lock on it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's cement block building.
Right. We have a lock on it, so that it's not, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, uh, one of the gentlemen is overseeing it and the town has a key, but, so that people can't go in and change it. But there's still the piece of, you know, who's hand-checking that we have signed forms on everybody? Who's making sure? I mean, I got a call from a hardware store with someone that, you know, was trying to get keys duplicated over there. So.
Did we, have we talked to maybe the fire department rec and see if those guys would be willing to take that back over?
Yes, I have spoken to Rick.
And what, as, what's his?
Um, he-
He's thinking about it.
No, no, no. He, he, there's ninety percent of the equipment that he would take and put over there. And as his fitness, as his fitness background and the-
Well, no, what I'm saying is-
That he would oversee it.
Have you been overseeing it?
Oh, for the public?
Right. No, 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 no. I, I'm not, I don't believe that's a good idea at all.
Okay.
I know. What I'm, what I'm suggesting, suggesting is, back in the day, when they got that grant, it was for the fire department.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. And that was set up just for the fire department at that point. Um, whether or not, there was enough people using it and it kind of evolved and everything else. Excuse me. And, uh, but right now, the way things are kind of involved at the fire station, this and that, whether or not, um, that would be something that they would be willing to take over at some point.
He would take the equipment and move it over there and it would be only open to fire and rescue.
Okay. Well, that's not it. And that's not what I'm asking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
What I'm asking is whether or not to take it over where it is for-
Um, I guess I would want, you know, there was conversation about the rec doing that too. And it, it doesn't really do anything but shift the responsibility.
Exactly.
The town's still responsible.
But the thing is, is you have firefighters to have memberships. Okay?
Very few, now that we've charged fees, maybe two.
But what's, the air quality is the same.
Yeah. Well, we got to figure all that out anyway.
But the insurance is going to have the same thing, but now essentially you've moved the responsibility over to-
Right to the town.
Because right now, what we, what the issue we have in here is we don't have enough money funded through town meeting.
Right.
It's going to shut down. And if, well, maybe. Okay.
Please say maybe, because-
Maybe.
I, I, believe me, I have some friends of mine that really want to stay open. But right now, looking at the numbers, it don't look good.
It's weak. Yeah.
Okay. So I'm just trying to come up with some other way to be able to at least keep the build of, building functionable, whether or not, and if they've only got a couple of people that are looking at it, then it's probably not even worth the while to even look into that.
Well, but they may, I mean, their, their department may utilize it more if there's no fee and it's right over there and they're using it during shift. I mean, we did see and, and it's only, it is a small amount, but I can show you the amount of people that were signed up last year versus this year. Um, and, and for whatever reason, and I'm sure it's not the cost, but for some reason, um, the fire department-
Cost is part of it. I mean, I-
No, the fire department, per, you know, their involvement went from, you know, from probably eighty percent to ten percent.
Yeah.
Um.
I myself, we talked to rec and see whether or not, if he talks to the department, whether or not that is something that they'd be interested. If some reason, it might help, you know?
Do you say, but, do you mean and still leave it open to the community?
No, no. I, I, you know, there's other issues with the community part of it. Because we, we just, you, you were just, like we were just discussing, people making duplicate keys. Who's keeping track of who's going in? Um, the liability aspects of it, you know? There's other, there's other problems with it. But, uh, I'm just trying to come up with a solution there to keep the building heated and used without, because we can't pay for it.
Well, and then we had, right. We had the other question, and for having the conversation, we had the other part of it, is that if we move the equipment to the fire department, and I'm not encouraging that one way or the other, um, you know, you've going to, you're going to have to have a special town meeting coming up because of this dam. Sanford's going to want their money and we need to, we need to handle that here shortly. Um, you know, do you, if, if it is, if it's safe and secure and the air quality and all those things are worked out, can it be used for, you know, the-
Rec.
The rec, the girl scouts, the boy scout. I mean, you know, we have a, um, one of the, other policies that we need to talk about at some point is, you know, we have the, the scouts, for example, or the girl scouts, you know, that have requested every Monday through the calendar year. We talked about this every Thursday. Um, they plan around that. They note, you know, they notify their parents and their kids. Um, the next two Mondays, I, or, um, off Mondays, I know I have a Warren Finance meeting and I know I have a, um, a rec meeting. So we're contacting them and saying, eh, sorry, but, you know, we're either shifting them downstairs or that might be a place to shift them.
That's, I, we, we kind of mentioned that a couple of times here and there. But, I mean, that's, that'd be a great idea, um, if we can, because I think as far as I know-
You'd have to ask the townspeople to, to keep it.
Well, the rec department had been talking about possibly a rec center at some point.
Right.
There's no better spot than right here in the center of town. I mean, you don't want a rec center down in the rec field. I mean, that's way out in the middle of nowhere. But, um, if that's the case, we got, we got to come up with a plan. Because for them to do that, we're going to have to come up with some money and get it fixed up to the point where they can do that.
Right.
The rec would have to come up with some sort of budget to us. Um, I, I only mentioned the fire department at the beginning, because they're the original ones that set that up.
Yeah. I don't know if they want the building. Do they? Has there been any conversation?
If they don't want the building, it's easy. You know, it's their equipment, as far as I know.
Right. But, you know, the, but the, the gym people and, and I know you don't have to know, I don't have to remind you of this, but they, if you're willing to spend money to fix the air quality and get it set up for these other committees or outside sources, they want you to do that for them first. I'm just saying.
Okay, there's an issue with that.
I'm the one that gets the calls. I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah. Because the problem is, is if you have an entity where the town is going to go and absorb money in for only a certain few that are going to willing to pay for it.
Right.
Where if you were letting everybody just go use it on the town buck, that'd be another story. I, I don't, that's kind of a slippery slope. I mean, stop dumping a bunch of money into something there. That's not even bringing in revenue.
Let's find out what the condition of the building is, according to the professionals.
Yeah, let's stop with that.
I'll bring that to you next week and then we'll further prep. But I can tell them six-thirty on the eighteenth. Gives us two weeks.
Yep. My hopes is that there's not a lot of things that have to be done over there and